Here we go. Good afternoon and welcome to the special Fairfax Town Council meeting. We'll call it order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda in affidavit or poster?
Second.
Fragment Kohler, the meeting protocol is set forth on the agenda and we move right into the regular agenda item. Garrett, you going to take the lead on this?
Perhaps before we do that, you had, you did have a closed session, so you just have to announce if there's any action.
We met in closed session, no action was taken, direction was given to staff.
Okay, great, so.
There's no open time in the special Fairfax Town Council meeting agenda, but we will be convening again on August 6th and of course, public comment is welcomed then.
So, regard to the item, again, it's the recommendation is introduced by title only in way of the first reading of ordinance 780 in ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax to repeal ordinance number 778. Perhaps quick background, on July 16th, the council voted to repeal ordinance 778 and that was after numerous public comments received on the matter and that was in response to referendum petition you received to regarding the ordinance 778. And as clarification, I think, to staff, we'd like to point out that the action before the council is, in order to repeal ordinance 778, you actually have to adopt an ordinance to repeal an ordinance. So, to eliminate confusion, people were getting calls from the public asking, are they modifying ordinance 778? Why are you adopting a new ordinance? And as clarification, the council needs to adopt an ordinance to repeal ordinance and that's ordinance 780. At July 16th meeting, count and consider the ordinance, council had numerous revisions to the ordinance. At that time, staff, just due to the number of revisions, could not revise it at that time. At that meeting, again, as clarification to the community, the council determined that it would like to see the ordinance again and actually you selected this day as a scheduled day for a special meeting to consider the ordinance. One, that actually met the schedules for everyone, and two, that allows the second reading of the ordinance to actually occur on August 6th. And again, as background, it takes two readings by the council to adopt an ordinance and the second reading has to happen at a regularly scheduled meeting and thus by doing the special meeting, you're able to keep the second reading, assuming you introduce in the ordinance today, you get to keep your second reading on August 6th and that keeps everything on track for that to take effect 30 days after the fact. And thus, the reason for the special meeting, the time was really a time to allow the town attorney to be here because she had other conflicts. So that's just some background of why we're having this, this meeting today. So. Oh, sorry, how about now? Sure, okay. Can you hear me now? Great. Do I need to repeat anything? Okay, so, moving forward, that's what we've done. We've incorporated the comments we received from council at that meeting into this ordinance. One slight change to the ordinance that we didn't put in was we're suggesting to the council that we actually, for the first whereas within the ordinance, we take the words, remains committed to encouraging and replace it with the word supports. So the word supports replaces, in the first sentence of the first whereas, remains committed to encouraging, we're replacing it with supports. And with that, that concludes the staff report. Town Attorney is here to answer any questions.
Town Attorney is only here till four o'clock this afternoon. Any questions of Garrett or the Town Attorney at this time? Seeing none, we'll go right into the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please join us at the microphone, give us your name and address if you so choose. Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
My name is David Crowell and I live in Fairfax. I don't want to speak to the merits of the ordinance in front of you, but I want to speak to the time and date of this meeting. I find it very unusual for this meeting to occur at a time when most of the residents of Fairfax cannot attend it as they're working. I also find it very inappropriate that notice was sent, but none of the details of the ordinance were sent out so that we could study it. Today is the first time that I've been able to see those details, five minutes before the meeting began. So I protest this meeting very strongly being held at this time and at this venue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. John.
John Sargent, a resident of Fairfax. Yeah, I'd also like to add to the gentleman's last comments. This is, it makes it awfully hard for a working person to actively participate in the community and I know, David, that's one of your main concerns, is to get active participation of citizens.
John, I could just speak to that very quickly if you don't mind and of course it doesn't count against your time. It doesn't count against, it doesn't count against your time.
Let me finish.
You want to finish? Because I could tell you why we did that.
Using my time, David.
No, 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 I'm not using your time.
Okay.
You get your time.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to comment on is these closed sessions. I would suggest to you that, I don't know exactly what you do in these closed sections, but it just adds to the paranoia of some secret stuff going on and I don't think you need to portray that image to the general public. Thirdly and lastly, I have made previous suggestions to you folks about putting plain English explanations to ordinance changes and I believe your legal counsel, if I'm not mistaken, Janet, said that was illegal? Did you, that wasn't your position?
That was illegal.
Oh, okay. Well, instead of saying ordinance 778 is modified by this section and this section and this section, what I'm proposing is that an added thing be put in the agenda somewhat like this. If these changes are agreed on, the following, the following actions may be taken. 10 units here, 12 units here, et cetera, et cetera. That's what I'm saying. For you to ask the general public to look at what's on the agenda and make sense of it is a reach. I've told you before, I have trouble with it. Luckily, I have a person in my family that is reading all of it and can educate me too. The other thing I want to say is, after just reading this very briefly, since it came out so late, is that when you state goals like we're going to provide senior housing for Fairfax citizens, I've been told the Fair Housing Practices Act prohibits you from limiting those kinds of housing to Fairfax residents and if that is true, you should not put that kind of language in your quote "goals." Thank you very much.
John, I want to touch on a few of the points and remind me because I'm not going to remember all of them, but the first one, normally, I completely agree with you, having a meeting in the middle of the afternoon on a Thursday is, and you know, I couldn't even remember the last time we did anything like that. But it was the council's belief that this had to move along expeditiously and time constraints and the room constraints, in fact, this room is booked starting at 5:30 this afternoon, made it such that if we didn't do it today, we would have to start on August 6th, which means you'd have to spin to, let's just make this up, September 5th or 6th for the next meeting, which means that if we were to adopt it after a second reading in September, wouldn't go into effect in October. Now, of course, as you know, there's legal mumbo jumbo going around here and we don't want to belabor the point any more than we have to. So that was the reason why we felt that we wanted to get it in front of the public as soon as we can, even in this odd timeframe. Of course, people are able, because we have brought the video folks in, you know, to watch this at a later time, although of course, they would not be able to comment today in front of us, we wouldn't have the wisdom of that comment. But of course, as we know, Fairfaxans are anything but shy in sharing their written thoughts and calling us up on the phone. Could you tell me what the second point was that you raised? Because I want to.
Well, one, there's two.
Oh, the closed session thing?
Right.
You know, I agree with you, secrecy is, as they say, sunshine is the best disinfectant for government. So, I'm not a big fan of closed session, however, there are, under the Brown Act, limited provisions that allow for this and so we only go into closed session, discuss in closed session, in those very limited circumstances. I'm sure council could go on, but one of them is litigation, the personnel, real estate, a very constrained set of circumstances. But it was felt by the, you know, wiser folks than me up in the legislature that it was appropriate for government to have that opportunity to discuss with its legal counsel and others in closed session on that limited frame of issues and they are very limited.
And David, I think I understand that, but, but when you have so many of them, I'll stand by my comment, I know you had the right to do it, but I'll stand by my comment, it doesn't contribute to people having faith in an open discussion with the council. And then, go ahead.
I can't disagree with you.
Okay.
I can't.
The third point was, was about a common sense.
We're going to look into that. It's a good idea. We'll look into that.
Good.
There's no reason for legalese and governmentalise.
Exactly.
When we can make it into, you know, normal language.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sure, John. Next.
Valerie Hood, 79 Domingo. I applaud the previous two speakers' comments. I'd like to add that I had a number of people email me today after I was able to find the documents actually pertaining to this meeting today at a very late date. I only had about an hour or so to prepare for this myself and they said they will be emailing you guys, so even though it's after the fact unfortunately now, would have been really nice to have this information much earlier. I'd also like to say that with all the attention that was given to our so-called affordable housing discussion with banners and everything and then such limited discussion over the actual thing that's happening to the town, which is the referendum, the idea of the so-called mistakes and all that, that we have such limited outreach for this part, which to me is the most important part. So, I'll be addressing the other things that I did see in this later on today and I'd also like to hear from people other than our mayor about these things. I think there are five opinions up there. Thank you.
Sir.
I think Hayden had a symphony called Surprise, but I think he meant it in a more positive Even though my name was written down with my email on two different forms that were passed around at your meetings, I found out about the meeting only indirectly this morning and luckily, I didn't have anything else scheduled for today, which is the only reason why I think I'm able to actually come here and see what's going on. And this represents, I think, a very big deficiency in your outreach, which contradicts, I think, the whole idea I thought of what the housing workshop was to be about, which was to increase a sense of community participation in the future building of this community that's reflected in these ordinances that will effectively rezone and through rezoning, redesign the community over the next period of 10 or 20 years. And so I think this, this is not a very good thing and I understand that there might be some reasons that you have to pursue this idea of expediency, but I think it's expediency at the expense of community and that, I think, is a poor trade-off and I think it doesn't reflect kindly on you. The second thing I wanted to reinforce was the language as referred to by the previous speaker concerning providing housing for anyone in particular. As I said at the workshop, I have an office right across from the fireside, the hotel that was, a motel that was torn down and rebuilt at extraordinary expense to the taxpayers of this country. I think it's something like $900 a square foot is the cost that came out and I will attest to the fact that the people who live there are not a part of our community, the people who live there are not people who lived in the community beforehand, there's no one from Marin County who previously was living in Marin County before this building was built, that in effect lives in the place. I don't know a person and I'm very involved in my community, who knows anyone who lives there, no one ever sees them and the, I think the order in the area is provided by the fact that it's a favorite on the parking off area there for the sheriff to sit and park. I think to make sure that in the substructure where the parking is underneath, we don't find ourselves enjoying, let's say nefarious activities going on there. And so I would reinforce the idea, take that misleading language out. You're not building housing for anyone who's living here today, you're building housing for people who are on a lottery waiting list with Section 8 vouchers. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. One last point on, on the process and the manager brought this up in his introductory thing. Should we move forward today? We do not adopt anything today. We, of course, bring it back on August 6th at a regularly scheduled council meeting, so the opportunity, again, for folks to, to speak on this is preserved. I take the measure of your concern, but I just want you to.
And please, put it in very plain language. What he was talking about is very detailed and it's very convoluted and I think you should have somebody who has some wordsmithing abilities, get on your website and put this in a language so that the people in this town can have a genuine understanding, who don't, haven't gone to the law school or something of that sort. Thank you.
Next speaker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. John Romatis, Fairfax. I was just, so if I understand it correctly, the ordinance is, you're passing the ordinance so that you can repeal an ordinance, is that what's happening? Pretty much it, right? That's it? Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon, Bruce.
Bruce Ackerman, Fairfax. So, I, just in response to the series of comments today about this meeting being unannounced or hard to figure out, I just wanted to point out, I attended the last meeting on the 16th. I actually left early, but when I left, it had already been scheduled, this meeting. I went home, I put it on my calendar, I'm here today. Not too complicated.
Okay. Other commenters? Yvette, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. So, 14-point type, one page. "I am very disappointed to see our Town Council completely disregard the wishes of Fairfax residents regarding ordinance 778 and also regarding the matter of being subjected to extremely loud music and PA systems for sporting and other events. Instead of ensuring that residents are able to have the peace and quiet they would be having were it not for the loudness of businesses playing music and events using super loud PA systems, our town employees and council members want to change the law to accommodate the offenders and make their offenses legal. That is very disrespectful of the residents and reflects a dysfunctional role as a person responsible for the well-being of our community. When the city of Mill Valley tried to change Miller Avenue and the people objected, the city enlisted an entourage of high-paid consultants to educate the community about the virtues of their plan. They held elaborate public workshops and information sessions that sounded great but were in fact, in fact, were tightly orchestrated PR gambits crafted to make sure the outcomes were exactly as planned. Those who protested were labeled as difficult and their objections were dismissed. Style triumphed over substance and though the city made a great pretense of listening to all points of view, nothing but the desired message was heard. The people organized. They conducted public opinion polls and created a community news email signup list. They held open town halls. By election time, their email list had reached over 1,000 registered voters and petitions in hand with an equal number of signers. The Miller Avenue Plan never saw the light of day again. We should not have any development that is not sustainable and in addition, we should be spending our money and other resources helping residents to become more independent for water, power, and food. We need to help people get solar power and make the most of rainwater collection and gray water irrigation. We need rent control to help human beings have a home. The poor people being forced out by exorbitant rent increases are not finding other homes because there are none affordable. Imposing a one-year moratorium on renting increases in Fairfax would create immediate affordable housing for many people. Also, that would give the community ample time to look at the problem and come up with a permanent solution." And I would like permission to invite the author of a book called The Best-Laid Plans, Bob Silvestri, to come and do a presentation at a Town Council meeting. I would like to get permission to do that, so I don't know how I would go about that, but, thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the draft ordinance this afternoon? Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jenny Kelly and I've been a Fairfax resident for, oh, I've been a resident for 13 years here, 18 total in Marin. I'd like to add my name to the list of this being a very inconvenient time for most working people. I do have to leave early to go to work. That's my first point. My second point is, I'd like to bring up the Tenskull Street, because it's set on the agenda that if it wasn't brought up, it couldn't be looked at in the future. Tenskull Street encompasses a number of businesses, a number of healing businesses. Frog Spa and Hot Tub is a healing sanctuary for hundreds of people in Marin and Fairfax. That business would have to close down with construction, dust, and noise. It would be gone. And the six units that are being proposed, and I know there's not an application in yet, but there is a proposal and he will. The landlord, Mr. Azazi, will, will apply and once he gets his foot in the door, I believe that there will be more units. Now, that's a feeling, I realize that's not a fact yet, but it'll put, I can't see, it'll put out 20 more jobs of massage therapists, other people, an architect, two yoga businesses, and other people who live at Tenskull Plaza. Now, I read in the agenda that the environment is something to be considered. We are the environment, we're not separate from the environment. So, we have to accept that we are the environment, there is no difference. So if you put out 20, 30 people and a major owner who supplies rent to that landlord, it's affecting the environment, it's affecting us. My job will be gone. I'm an elder. My job will absolutely be gone and I will have to commute to work. Find work elsewhere out of Fairfax. So that's my feeling about Tenskull, Tenskull Plaza. Also, it's a neutral space. People come in, they bring their dogs, they take a rest, they de-stress going through that lot where that nine units and possibly 36 units will be built. That's what small towns are about. I was in a small town, there's back alleys, there's neutral space that is not filled up with townhouses or other things like that, that maybe will not even be available to Fairfax residents, quote unquote. It may not be available to me. So that was my second point with Tenskull Street Plaza. I think Frogs is an iconic landmark in Tenskull, in Tenskull Plaza, Tenskull Plaza. I'm getting kind of nervous, so I'm.
So, let's kind of.
So, I would like a more, a time, inconvenient, a convenient time where people can hear what's going on. I went over to Town Hall trying to get the ordinance, I couldn't get a copy of the ordinance as it was listed in your agenda. So I made the effort to do that, but could not get anything but the agenda, so I just want to note that. Okay.
Garrett, what time, I appreciate your comment, ma'am, before the next speaker comes up. Garrett, at what time did we post the ordinance last night? I'm sorry, Michelle?
Hi, I can speak to that. I put the agenda out for this meeting on Tuesday afternoon. The staff report went out yesterday, 24 hours in advance of the special meeting, as the Brown Act requires. The ordinance wasn't completely ready, I put it out about an hour after 2 o'clock with the staff report saying it would be put out as a supplemental item. It is on our website. That's it? It's been on our website in the usual place, every time we have a meeting on the homepage, the date of the meeting is, is there and then there's the word "agenda" and "packet" and there are links and you click on them and you can find all of that.
The people at the center, the Town Hall, apparently didn't know where the packet was and they also said the meeting was at 6 o'clock. I said, "No, it's not, it's at 3." Thank you.
Sir.
I'm Chris McManus, I live across from the Church Project. I'd like to address ordinance 780. The proponents, ordinance 780 is a result of the referendum to rescind and it seems to me that a lot of these proponents are bemoaning the loss of local control, that they, this is how I read it, that they feel that, you know, this, this housing element is out of, out of local control and I, I don't agree. I, I felt that, they also feel that ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, is dictating and mandating certain things. I didn't get that either. I, I know that ABAG weighed in on the, you know, the different metrics of what housing is available, what will be available and all this stuff, but that's, you know, that was kind of an informational role. I didn't feel, but this is, we got a lot of disagreements, to say the least. And this referendum to rescind was a crafty, artful move by the political operatives, I will give them that. But I hope this does not become a template to defeat housing elements all over the state and I also hope that it doesn't create an atmosphere where we have no planning. I mean, these, like Silvestri was brought up, okay, he wrote the book Best-Laid Plans, which also was a book written under Randall O'Toole, who did address the Civic Center and he's another public policy wonk who wrote a book, incredibly enough, also called Best-Laid Plans. I wish they would get an original title. But what their idea is no planning. That's the idea, no planning. They don't want no plan. And, and I don't agree with that. I don't agree, I don't agree that defeating planning is, is an efficient way of creating community. I don't think it's a smart way of creating community. I think it's a really good way to get lost and this process is proof of that point. But we're going along and we're going to, we're going to do this ordinance and we're going to see what happens. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in the foreseeable future and I really thank the council for their patience and their time. Thank you.
Well, I can speak to the foreseeable future, although we have not yet set a date. Council has been asked to reply on dates that it is available in September to begin to look at the first round of workshops and to follow that up probably in the beginning of next year with another thematic aspect of workshops. So, the idea that this is an end in and of itself, just to let you know, since you brought up the point, that we will be hopefully scheduling stuff certainly in that last third of the current year.
Thank you.
Just to your point about ABAG and planning, repealing ordinance 778 does not reduce the level of local planning or local oversight here in Fairfax. That's, that's really not an accurate statement. We have extremely detailed planning ordinances here in Fairfax and if anything, the regional housing needs assessment, which requires that we grant certain housing entitlements as a matter of right, actually reduces the amount of public oversight and the degree of planning that local communities are permitted to engage in. So I really think that that whole argument that the repeal in some sense reduces local planning is really a misnomer. I think, in fact, it actually does the opposite. The other thing as far as our relationship with ABAG and housing and community development, which is the state agency which delegates its authority to ABAG, that relationship is not a peer-to-peer relationship, that is a relationship of subordination. We are given. We are given certain quotas to encourage housing construction. They are enforced. So, I just want to clarify the record and maybe clarify your understanding, but when we get the regional housing needs assessment numbers from that agency, they look at our work product to make sure that we satisfy their mandate to make it happen. So, it is, it is not a peer-to-peer relationship. It is a relationship of mandates to local government.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, can I ask a clarification? So, what are these enforcement tools that ABAG has for the RHNA?
It's HCD, and I don't want to get us off track, but I would be happy to engage with you offline.
Yeah, let's do it offline. Ma'am?
Good afternoon.
One more time? Okay. Good afternoon. My name's Mimi Willard. I attended your housing forum a couple of weeks ago, and one of the themes that I heard was a discussion of the fact that the process that got seven seven eight in place was too rushed. And that was something that seemed to be conceded by staff and officials, and something that was of concern to the community as to how we got here. So, now it seems like we're a little bit in that same situation again, where people are saying, gee, now that we're working on seven eighty, things seem a little too rushed too. And the explanation for that is, well, you know, there's a specter of litigation and some mitigating circumstances that surround that. And I would point out that at the last meeting last Wednesday, you were essentially in a situation where you had two choices. One of them was to repeal seven seven eight, or the other one was to put a certified referendum on the ballot. And neither of those was cleanly done at that meeting. And so, now we find ourselves at a juncture where there's additional language being introduced or whatever. And it seems as if there really just ought to be a simple motion to repeal seven seven eight, which could be done in a sentence, and you have an up or down vote. Thank you.
Barbara?
Yeah, just, just to respond is, we did vote last week to repeal, I am, we did vote last week to repeal seven seven eight. But in order to repeal, it's not just a motion. You have to actually have an ordinance to undo. So, that's what we're working on. But last week, we voted to repeal, and now what we're doing is fleshing out the language of the ordinance, which makes the legal action to make that go into place.
Well, then, but, but in, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but then in drafting seven eight zero, there, from what I heard of the discussion at that meeting, there was various language being proposed to frame that in terms of why it was going to be done, or what would come next, or what have you. And it seems to me that this really should have just been a, shouldn't take any further language, and it could have been done last week.
Well, actually, what happened is, I personally put together a number of findings. I think I had about twelve that I had put together.
Yes.
But because the language had to be crafted to make it appropriate, rather than try to do that in a half an hour at that meeting, we felt it was appropriate to have this special meeting so we could have the language fleshed out. I mean, I think I brought up about twelve or fifteen findings, and that made it very difficult for staff to wrap those in at that time. So, we did vote to repeal, but now what we're doing is putting the ordinance in place that makes the action complete. And the reason we're having this special meeting, as David explained, is that we have to do the first reading. We can do the first reading in a special meeting, and then on August sixth, we would do the second reading where people have, will have another opportunity to comment. And then in order to take effect, it's thirty days after that. Had we waited till August sixth, we would have been looking at October before the repeal was finally in effect, if everything goes the way we think it will. So, I hope that helps.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank. You know, John...
Yeah, one quick thing. I mean, these findings that we're making and adding to this legislature, just to explain it further, they give it legal merit. Basically, they gave it this, our repeal of seven seventy-eight, some legs to stand on. If you just say, "No, we're just gonna repeal it," it's, it's kind of like a kid saying, "No, I just don't want to go to bed," you know, even though it's eight o'clock, or, you know, whatever it is. We have to have some grounding in these findings, and that makes it, because, like it or not, it is, it's law. So, it's a legal case, so we have to make sure it's strong enough to be the law.
So, in effect, what you're saying is that the additional language is specifically directed towards that purpose?
That's correct. I mean, it's all basically, it's support for what we're trying to do here.
Let's get back on track. Thank you both. Wendy?
Yeah, Wendy Callens, Forest Knowles. First of all, point of information, I got here late. Are we at open time? Are we talking about the item?
We're talking about the item. There was no open time.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was at the right place. First of all, you can't win for losing, it seems. It doesn't matter what you do. The only reason that I know that this is being rushed is because there is litigation that is forcing you to rush it. And so, if people don't want it rushed, then they should ask the people who are the litigants to withdraw their litigation, and then you can take your time. Otherwise, this has to be rushed. So, as far as the ordinance itself, there is a lot of language in there. I do understand why the language is in there. I have a couple of questions about the language that was put in there, and I want to thank the council for crafting something that I think does bring at least the council together, I hope. We are trying to bring the town together. There is some major disagreement. There are people who definitely don't want to see any more building in this town. And there are people who would like to see some, think that there is some room for some building in town. I think where there's a lot of agreement is that there's more that needs to be done to protect things like the affordable commercial spaces at School Street and affordable housing in the various apartment buildings. And we can't get to talking about that as long as we keep hammering about this. So, the less we have to talk about this particular repeal and the rezoning, the more we can have the time to actually get to rent control, which Larry has put on the agenda twice now and you haven't been able to get to. So, I do hope we can put this behind us and get on to other town business. As far as the ordinance itself, I wonder what the word encourage, the Fairfax, Town of Fairfax remains committed...
Wendy, Wendy, that language has been tentatively revised. To, the first sentence now reads, staff made a recommendation at the very beginning of the meeting, to read, whereas the town of, the town council of the Town of Fairfax, and take out the words, remains committed to encouraging, and substitute four words for one, supports. So, the Town of Fairfax supports the goals, objectives, policies.
Okay. So, the only other thing I wanted to talk about, and this goes back to the rezoning of the Lutheran church. I know there is concern of wanting to leave the Uplands part and URL, and I think the goal is the same on all of our parts, which is to leave that part of the parcel undeveloped. I'm concerned if you do split the parcel, that actually allows for some development up on the hillside area. And I think when all's said and done, what we really want to see the end result be is that there is only development on the two acres, and the rest of it is remain an open space. That comes from a plant, a planned development can consolidate everything in one area. So, I'm a little worried about splitting that out, and I caution, I don't know if we have to conclude it in this language, but I'm worried about that because I'm afraid that you might end up with a situation where you're actually having more housing happening there when you would like to have none.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to make a comment. Wendy, about the timing. My understanding of the elections code is that once the referendum is certified, the council legally has two choices, to either put it on the ballot or to repeal the ordinance. In order for us to stay on track, at least to get the matter on the ballot potentially, we had to put the matter on today in order to either put it on the ballot at our August sixth meeting or to adopt the repeal. So, it's not necessarily the litigation that's driving this. It's the referendum process, and there's certain deadlines involved with putting a matter on, on the ballot. You have to, you have to make that decision at least eighty-eight days before the election, which we actually make by putting this on on August sixth. So, that is the timeline that's driving this.
Point of information, does it say specifically this November's ballot?
If not, then we'd probably have to have a special election at great cost to the town.
Right.
So, you know, we'll see where this repeal comes out, but I'm just saying, once that referendum is certified, state law requires that we move somewhat expeditiously to either repeal it or put it on the ballot. That is why we are meeting here today was actually to expedite, hopefully, the repeal.
I understand, I understand why you're meeting here today. And like the, like Bruce, I also knew that it was on the agenda. I had it on my calendar. So, I knew this was happening, and I know why you have to do that. And just a reminder that ABAG is only requesting that, okay, one percent of the Bay Area's development is being asked of Marin. One percent. That's it.
Thank you, Wendy. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. I'm Julie Lightzel. I actually live in Larkspur, and I'm late to the game, and I really don't know much about what's going on here, but I was very involved in the Larkspur landing fight. And, you know, the, one thing that wasn't reported in the media was the hundreds of people that came to the, to the meetings who spoke against the huge project that they were, not project, but the, the plan that they were trying to put into place, were really angry that, that it was not communicated to the, to the community in a, in a very plain-spoken, common-sense way. They talked about the station area plan. The newspaper articles referred to the station area plan and the circulation elements. There was a nice postcard that went to a few people on the boardwalk that talked about the parks and the sidewalks, and they never bothered to say how many units they were planning on building there. Many of the people who are opposed to that are not opposed to maybe, maybe some of the things that you're doing here. I don't know. I'm all for common-sense building within our zoning. And Bob Silvestri does say, if you read his book, you know, there are, there are a lot of ways that you can use common sense in making sure that there are ways through infill or through cohousing, creative ways that incorporate low-income housing and senior housing in a way where there is an ongoing process for upkeep of the buildings and making sure that the low-income people continue to go in there. Somebody mentioned the lists that, that are used to fill the low income now, and I read in the paper that a woman was really happy to be, you know, part of the lottery because she could get this unit and pass it on to her son. You know, I'm not sure that, that that's what low-income housing should be for. It shouldn't be a generational thing. It should be for people, especially senior citizens maybe, who stay in the committee. So, I'm just encouraging you to try to keep it, every project, within your own local zoning that you've had for so many years, and not to allow ABAG to say, "Well, you have to, you know, build a certain amount, and it's only one percent of the whole Bay Area." We have something special here. We have, we have a community with a lot of character and a lot of charm, and that's why people of all income levels and all colors want to come to live here because we have a special place. And I'd encourage you to stand up, like Larkspur did, to the MTC or ABAG, or saying you need a priority development area or a transit hub here, or eighty percent of your building has to be there. I mean, just stop it. That's what wasn't reported in the paper, is that not one person stood up in favor of all those units at that meeting. In fact, most people were really outraged at saying, "Why has this grown out of control? Why did the MTC tell us we had to spend $500,000 studying something we didn't even want in the first place?" So, so I just wanted to pass that along because I won't be here on August sixth, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Can I just respond really quickly? I just want to say before, I'm sorry, excuse me. I just encourage you to take a look at the, at the language in our housing element. Excuse me? Ma'am?
Larkspur.
Hi, I was just responding to you. I just wanted you to, you know, I wanted to encourage you to take a look at some of the notes, the minutes, the comments that came out of our town forum that we had a couple of weeks ago. Absolutely the plainest English you could ever imagine, all being incorporated into the town's website, into the weave, the fabric of what makes this a special town, trying to avoid the anger, the fight that's been going on here. That's what's special about Fairfax. We've had people come, and both sides have come, and they've spoken forthrightly about what they believe, and I think we're moving forward. So, I'd just like to respectfully differ with you that it has to end up with a fight to kill. So, I want you to know that we are doing that in a very, very unique Fairfax way, and I encourage you to look at the notes. It's been really a...
It sounded like there were some legalese, and that's what I'm saying.
There's a lot of legalese, but we're working through it, and it's written in a really beautiful way. I encourage everyone at home to take a look if you haven't.
Thank you. Jane?
Jane Richardson-Mack, resident of Fairfax for thirty years, I think. I remain confused. If seven seventy-eight, if there's a motion to repeal seven seventy-eight that has been passed, I thought there were two choices, either repeal seven seventy-eight or put it on the ballot. Now, if I heard correctly, I think I just heard Larry say that at August sixth, it could still go on the ballot. That confuses me because I thought the decision was made that it was a repeal.
Jane, let me ask the manager to jump in here and sort of go over this one more time so that we avoid all confusion.
So, maybe it's clarification. So, the council back on July sixteenth had to decide at that time, to decide the two options. One is repeal the ordinance or place it on the ballot. At that time, the council determined that they'd like to repeal the ordinance, and again, as what's, I think the confusion is, you have to adopt an ordinance to appeal an ordinance. And so, that's what they're doing. They had some changes, and so that's why they, at the meeting, they scheduled this meeting to introduce the ordinance. And so, what's happening is, if they introduce the ordinance tonight, then the second reading happens on August sixth, in which case, if that happens, then you wouldn't put something on the ballot because they repealed it. But I think what Councilmember Bragman's just referring to is, it keeps the options open for having this special meeting in the odd event that maybe it doesn't get introduced. So, really...
Jane, Jane, let me, let me add one thing to you.
That didn't help, I'm sorry.
Listen carefully in some of the other commentators on this point. Let me see if I can give you the exact reason. When we, when the council voted on a three to two to repeal seven seventy-eight, what would have been in a perfect world is that we then moved right there to number seven eighty. However, Councilmember Cole, Councilmember Goddard, and I think Larry, had some, had some other language that they wanted to include. It was too large to sort of shoehorn it right there in the brief period of time.
Understood.
So, in other, so instead of doing it right there, and then we said, hey, I think it was Barbara's idea, to, well, let's set a, let's set a meeting, and as soon as we can, and of course, you need two. So, let's do that as soon as we can, and then if it was the council's pleasure to adopt it, then we would finalize that adoption at a regular meeting in August sixth. Because if we didn't do it by special meeting, we would then meet for the first time on August sixth, and then September fifth, or whatever it is. And then it wouldn't go into effect for thirty days. So, in, again, in a perfect world, it would have been nice to move from the repeal of seven seventy-eight to the beauty of seven eighty, but it was the council's decision that that would have been, just, there was so much language that was getting thrown in there.
Understood.
Not a good idea. Okay?
Yeah, but I still don't understand how it can now, in its, whatever happens to it at the August sixth meeting, that it could possibly go up for a vote.
Okay, if the council...
I mean, a vote, be put up to a vote for the community.
Well, a recent nightmare would suggest that that could occur. When seven seventy-eight came forward the first time, the council voted three to one to one to approve seven seventy-eight. Well, it did, it, first it voted unanimously to approve it in the first reading, but in the second reading, that's when it went in a different direction. So, we could theoretically, and I don't want to really give it a snowball's ha, a chance out here... here, I don't want to give it a snowball's chance today, that we would in any way gather, it would be hard for me to imagine, that we gather on August 6th and say, you know, we talked about it back then, a couple of days ago, last week, week or so ago, and did a first reading, but the second reading, not so much, so we better go to the ballot. My hope here today is that council will use the opportunity for a first reading and then a second reading and then 778 will go to its grave and we will move on.
Okay, so there is a snowball's chance in a hot climate that it could go to a public vote?
Yes, it could.
Slim, but it exists.
Slim might not be the word I would use.
Okay, I understand that, then my last thing I just want to make clear is if 778 is in fact repealed and 780 is concocted or takes its place or makes it legal so it can go away, is there anything left over from 778 that carries forward and is placed in 780 and could conceivably have to be part of whatever it is, 781 or whatever replaces 778?
Well, does anybody want to, Garrett please?
The best answer is 778, it'd be like 778 never existed.
Good, thank you, I appreciate your answers and thank you for being here and allowing us to partake.
Jane, and thank you Garrett for that clarification. Mallory?
If I may, ma'am? Mallory Gaidheim, go ahead. I was just going to say 780 repeals 778 with reasons, okay?
With what?
With the reasons why. It basically says why, it's going back to the analogy of the kid who doesn't want to go to bed and the parent says, no, you gotta go to bed because it's 8 o'clock and the kid says, yeah, but my aunt Jenny is here, I never get to see her, that's a reason why and the parent would say, okay, you get to stay up till 8:30 or whatever it is, I mean, but to go back to our...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to make it, just try to make it simple.
Please.
Okay, it gives us reasons why and it repeals 778.
Great, can we just move on here, Mallory?
Okay, I just have, I have questions. So this is being propelled by the mandate from the government, is this the first, is this what's doing this?
State law, you will notice as a longtime watcher of the council, that when we adopt an ordinance, there are some exceptions, but as a general rule, there's a first reading and a second reading. A first reading and a second reading.
No, no, I'm not talking about the reading, I'm talking about the whole idea of affordable housing now.
No, that's not what we're doing. We're here today on a very limited ministerial task, if you will, to repeal one ordinance and to do it by another.
Should I save these questions then because it's about that?
On a hot day like this, Mallory, you can't imagine how grateful I would be if you would save your questions for another day.
You owe me.
Mayor and council members, Frank Agar, 13 men away. I canceled a previously scheduled appointment in Monterreyo at 4:00 PM today to be in attendance to this meeting. I guess what it boils down to is Fairfax for Fairfax. Ordinance 780 was posted late last night. I originally stated 230 parcels were rezoned by ordinance 778. Fairfax staff said it was only 68. I actually went back to ordinance 778 and recounted the parcels, there are 246 of them listed by parcel number. Section 5 residential, 7.5 lot size, at least four parcels. Section 6 residential, multiple RM, 64 parcels. Section 7, limited commercial zone, two parcels. Section 9, commercial service zone amended to accept highway, central commercial zone amended to accept highway commercial, 112 parcels. Section 10, planned development district, 24 parcels. Section 11, Upland Residential UR, 16 parcels. And section 12, public domain, PD, 24 parcels. The so-called typos of mistakes were not. Example, Jehovah's Witness's property was clearly rezoned by address, number one, by parcel number two and by map, three ways. Today, the proposed ordinance number 780 is four pages, whereas on the 60th of July it was two pages. Now included is a reaffirmation of the previously zoned PDDs in ordinance 778. I have three questions, but I'll accept an answer if someone wants to answer them after I'm finished. So the first question would be, are all 246 parcels zoned by ordinance 778 going back to what they were previously zoned before March 5th? That's one question. Section 4D of ordinance number 780 says it will not affect the town's plan to rezone for provisions of senior housing, workforce housing and homeless shelters. So the next question, number two, is what does that mean? Between today and the regular meeting in August, Fairfax residents will have the sufficient time to review ordinance 780 and become fully informed. So the third question is, who wrote ordinance 778 and does Fairfax have an opportunity to reimburse for some, for the additional costs that has occurred as a result of the mess that ordinance writer created? Ordinance number 780 was not posted within 24 hours of today's meeting, was posted last night sometime after 9:00 PM. I look forward to the meeting on August 6th, thank you very much.
I'm looking at town council and...
I'm not too sure there's answers other than the, maybe the answer, the basic question is, it's a matter of opinion in terms of the parcels, it's, sorry, okay. In order to address the issue of the parcels, it's clear there's perhaps a difference as to what's constituted, was affected by 778. But as a point, it should be noted that those parcels, as listed, at least most of them, will go back to the way it was listed currently in the code, which was prior to 778. So that's how it's listed currently in the current zoning ordinance.
Could I just say one quick comment, ma'am? It's just for my understanding, this ordinance is a vehicle to repeal 778 and if it's passed, it does so and we go back to the status quo that existed on March 6th before it was passed, correct? Okay.
Alexander?
Alexander Binick, Fairfax. In recent months, we've been advised many times, including by some on the council, to quote, "pull our community back together." That's why this issue shouldn't go to the ballot, that's good advice. Unfortunately, there's another trend happening of mutual provocation, escalation and power struggle that can only increase the tension and bad feeling dividing Fairfax. I was troubled at the last council meeting to see people holding unnecessarily provocative signs saying, "let us vote," in effect daring the council to not repeal 778. And maybe it's unfair to me, of me to hold our elected officials to a higher standard, but we heard our mayor lecturing the community that quote, "democracy requires compromise." Did he follow that pronouncement with the statesman-like gesture of compromise himself, joining the council majority who had already indicated their support for repeal? On the contrary, he said he wouldn't support repeal nor going to the ballot, the two options that the referendum law offers. Instead, he favored taking no action, in effect double daring the referendum initiators to either sue, costing the town money and delaying our ability to move forward, or to drop the referendum, which would disenfranchise everyone who signed the petition. These high stake games are bad for our community and I lost some respect for you, Mr. Mayor. The other day, the IJ's editorial ended by saying, quote, "the council's vote to repeal the plan is an opportunity to come up with a plan that stands, that Fairfax residents will say represents a community consensus," unquote. Well, we will never achieve total consensus, but we have an opportunity to move much farther in that direction and there are things we need to explore deeply that will help us, get us there. Some Marin residents don't want affordable housing for classist reasons, admitting they fear crime and reduce property values, but I don't believe that's the prevailing sentiment here in Fairfax. Rather, our emerging consensus might prefer that what new housing is built here should be nearly all for very low income and extremely low income seniors and local workers. Most of the employees in Fairfax work part-time at pretty low wages and even the so-called low income housing category will be above their means. They particularly need our help. Our housing element acknowledges that so-called workforce housing here would include housing for a Marin County family of four earning up to $185,400. Even A-Bag's so-called low income category includes single-person incomes up to over $63,500 for seniors or anyone else. Given that all new housing along the San Francisco Street corridor will increase congestion, is that the kind of housing we want to encourage adding? This is the kind of issue that warrants our town discussing in depth, rather than just letting the very imprecise affordable label to distort the real underlying questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Council, Michael McIntosh. There's many comments I'd like to make, especially after last meeting, that I really feel our mayor let us down in a democratic process, but what I want to remind us what's actually more important than all of this stuff, I'm hoping that we can shut this meeting down and work under good faith of the council that 780 is going to repeal 778 and bring this back. Because honestly, more important than this is when a parent can participate with the birthday. And I remember in good faith, our council said she had a birthday party to go with her children. And I know if that was my children, I'd want to be there more than I'd want to be here. So I hope everybody can kind of move forward in that direction, accept you on good faith that we're going to come back with language that repeals 778, looks to protect our effort to move forward, looks to protect our affordable housing for seniors at the Lutheran Church and allow our council to go home and spend this evening with her children. Thank you.
Okay, on that, you're free to go, Janet. Diane?
Diane Hoffman, 33 Portius, Fairfax. When I went around and had people sign the petition, I did not make a big deal about all the mistakes. I wasn't even aware of most of those mistakes. And the people who signed the petition for me, most of them, it was just the simple thing that there was a blanket rezoning and with a minimum of 20 units per acre, that's, I think, the crux of it. And instead of what you're trying to do, you get rid of this and then you're going to do another blanket rezoning minus the mistakes and maybe some changes, I think the way to handle it, it'll make it easier for everybody, is get rid of this and no blanket rezoning. Let, just like Bennett House, they came forward, they had a wonderful plan and they worked it through and they got it. And that's the way to do it for any other developer, let them come to you and if you like their plan, if it's a lot of affordable housing, then you can help it get through. Forget the blanket rezoning.
Thank you Diane. Any other speakers? Please. Good afternoon.
I'm Deborah Benson, I live at 370 Cascade Drive, I've been here in Fairfax for 21 years. I'm really shy about speaking in public, so forgive me if I blush. I'm curious about the necessity of coming up with a new ordinance to replace 778 in order to repeal 778? Is it necessary for it to be a like ordinance? Could it be an ordinance that protects the rezoning of, say, the Chevron property alone? Or does it have to be this major ordinance that looks like 778? That's one question. Another question I have, I was reading on the town website, the traffic impact study that led to the approval of Good Earth, which said 2,000-plus trips from out of town a day, which has come true, but one major point in that impact study was, quote, "Fairfax is built out." So my question is, at the point that that was approved, was the town aware of this general plan that was going to rezone these parcels to allow so much more housing and more traffic? Second question. And the third, this is the first time in section D of 780 that I've seen homeless zones referred to, was that language in 778? That's all, that's my question.
Can I respond? So the question about the general plan and did we know that when the Good Earth was approved?
I'm just curious.
Being built out, yes, the general plan has been, as we've spoken many, many times, in the works for 14 years. And so all of that and the housing element was being developed and was back at the state because we didn't go for it the way they wanted it to be. So yes, with great awareness. The homeless beds that are required of our town are three. So in the PD zoning, that's the most appropriate place to zone for that, it doesn't mean we're going to have three homeless beds. And so then the other thing...
Was it in 778?
It was in 778 under, was it not called out in 778?
Okay, so just to clarify things and it may make it more confusing. So ordinance 780 puts forth what are called findings that state why the repeal is appropriate. And that finding comes out of the general plan that includes language about housing and also includes homeless, so that's just a straight finding out of that. 778 didn't specifically speak to homeless things, but that's one of the goals of our general plan that fit there because it had the other elements in it, if that's helpful.
And then the last question you asked?
Was...
780 is designed as a repeal ordinance. By law, you must repeal an ordinance by another ordinance. It has nothing to do with whether it's anything going forward about implementing any of the pieces, it has nothing to do with that at this time.
Does it have to be a like ordinance?
It's not a like ordinance, it repeals the ordinance, so it calls up the pieces of 778 as they were written.
That's my question.
Yes.
Could it be another ordinance that is put before the council? If you have to replace, if you have to have a new ordinance to repeal?
I understand.
Could it be any ordinance? Or does it have to be one that relates to the one that we repealed?
That would require a new ordinance as we move forward. At this time, this is merely a repeal ordinance of 778.
I'm still confused. Does it have to be an ordinance that relates to the ordinances being repealed or could it be any ordinance?
No, it has to relate to the ordinance being repealed.
Okay, with that, are there any other speakers? Yes, good afternoon.
Jim Rice, 192 Laurel Drive. Somebody mentioned the word sustainable, I know it's a buzzword that's been overused a lot, but it's still a very important word. And I remember in the mid-'70s, driving from Nikasio Valley to Mill Valley would take 45 minutes at the most. That's so different now. And when you look at a new ordinance that's going to replace 778, not the 780 repeal, but the one that's going to have housing element and address that, I think we really have to look at that. I volunteer, now that I'm retired, a couple of days a week at the Redwoods, this beautiful garden in Mill Valley. I have to park it Safeway across the street almost all the time and not just because of their construction that's going on. You look at the Lutheran Church property and again, attach that word sustainable to it and 40 units, 20 units, are you kidding? There's no parking for it and we already have gridlock. So going forward, looking at this whole housing element comprehensively, we have to keep that in mind when we're already at gridlock and that degrades the quality of our lives here in Fairfax. We have to, I think, take a dramatic look at the numbers that are being proposed and again, attach that word sustainable to it, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? You were a teacher, right?
Yes.
For a long time. I've noticed something this summer, I think everybody else has, I work at home, so, you know, weird hours, you get to go out at different times, sometimes in commute hours, sometimes not. You know, the day the school ends, the traffic drops off rather substantially around here.
Yes.
And so when we begin in our workshops to discuss this, I would really like you to come back and talk about the fact that the old Pogo cartoon always strikes me, we've met the enemy and he's us.
Right.
And the enemy is, why are those kids out there driving around, those parents driving around? Because a lot of this traffic problem, it seems to me, and I'm not a traffic expert, and it's just, you know, seat of the pants in a car looking around for the last 16, 18 years, is that on the day school ends, the traffic really goes right off the cliff.
It's always that way, David.
Well, then isn't the, let's just talk about it down the road.
Sure.
All right.
Those darn kids.
Can't trust them. Okay, anybody else want to speak this afternoon, otherwise we know Mallory? Otherwise, we know Mallory has spoken. If there's any other questions or comments?
I didn't hear a speaker.
Okay, Mallory, very quickly, because we want to close the public hearing and come back.
I want to see if this is more simple, if this is more simple than I think it is. You guys have already voted to repeal 778, yes? So all we're really doing right now is tweaking the language for 780. That's the only thing as the issue, is that true or not?
The difference between 780 as it appeared last week and this week is much more than a tweak. If it would have been just a tweak, we would have done it that night.
But it's, it's language, right?
It's language, yes.
So we're finessing the language and taking out what seems not to be relevant at this point.
Barbara made, and, and the other council members made, yeah, and Larry made other suggestions.
Right.
That were not tweaks, they were so substantial that they required a comprehensive revision to 780 and that's why we didn't want to do it right then and there.
No, I understand that part, but really we're just, we are, we're finessing, it's not a major deviation of anything. We're still...
Fine. Great, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Because everybody's making this like it's, we should get rid of, we've done that, we've been there, now we're just finessing it substantially. Okay.
I think substantially.
If you don't mind, I have just one other question that's kind of come up. I finally got a chance to finish this wordy document that came out. Is that all right with y'all? Okay. All right, so, let's see if I can find it. All right, so on section B, it says something about conducting community outreach. And I just need to weigh in, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people. I'm really not comfortable and I don't feel a sense of trust in this proposed process because many of us had felt that we got a less than respectful reception from our planning commission, both at meetings and also in testimony before the council towards people whose opinions differed from theirs. As a body, they seem to have interests that preclude an inclusive community housing discussion. So I just want to ask that future discussion about any kind of so-called affordable housing be implemented by community members with a balance of both sides so that we have, we have, so that we can be heard in this discussion, that we've heard, actually, sorry, what I'm trying to say is, both sides that we have heard from in this discussion over the last few months. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back. Council, we have the language change that was suggested by staff. Other questions of staff or other comments?
I just want to make a quick one.
Barbara, please.
I just want to say I had a lot of changes and I really appreciate the incorporation of those changes and I also like the change that staff support, recommended. So my feeling is I'm, I'm ready to move forward on it. Thank you.
Other council members? Larry?
No, I just would move to waive reading of the entire ordinance.
Bless you. Okay, we have a...
Second.
And there you have it.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to waive...
Waive first reading.
First reading and introduced by title only.
Ordinance, an ordinance 780, an ordinance of the Town Council, the Town of Fairfax, to repeal ordinance 778.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second, Cola, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Good.
Second.
Is that, does that constitute the introduction? Okay.
And I would like, again, to close, I don't know if we usually close in honor of something sad, but this is something glad. Happy birthday. It is Janet Coulson's birthday and her triplets. So thank you for coming.
Four birthdays at once.
Drive safely home.